Teresa Coats Ellis joins us now. She's on the Manassas City Council and there is never a shortage of news happening in Manassas. And we always appreciate you coming on and talking with us and pulling back the curtain and letting us see the inside of what's going on in the inner workings of the city.
Thank you for having me, Uriah. Glad to be here.
One of the things that a lot of people are talking about right now is this grading policy that was amended. The city, we've been writing about the past few years, the city has adopted this grading policy within its public school division. Post COVID, as all the kids were coming back into school from working from remotely from home. They adopted this policy that basically said if a teacher assigns and gives an assignment and that's what teachers do, they give homework. The student had up until the end of the grading quarter to return that assignment in. And last night, it looks like the city, it looks like the city school board came and they voted to amend that policy, which now gives the student full credit for assignments completed within two weeks after the initial due date. And before the end of the quarter. So it seems like you're still given, I don't know, a little, a lot of leeway. I'm not sure as to what has changed, but I know as a business owner, when I assign a project to, you know, to someone whom I'm paying, I kind of expect it within a reasonable amount of time and that generally not three to four months. Is this policy, a lot of people are talking about it. Is it preparing kids for the real world?
Um, I do think that um, my, my children all went to the public schools, graduated. And if you do have rules and regulations that you expect from your, I'm saying this as a mother, I guess, from students. They will try to follow them. So this is, in my opinion, just having, having things set up so kids are successful. Like you said, in the real world, you're not going to get two weeks to finish an assignment. If you don't have it done, you're gonna, your job might be in jeopardy. And you don't, they don't want to, people don't want to work with people that don't finish their assignments. When you're in a team as well, it affects everything. So I understand, you know, they're trying to be a little more sympathetic to the students because of the pandemic, but the pandemic is over. And the entire country was affected by the pandemic. You have schools that are excelling right now and some with very limited budgets. And it comes down to leadership in the schools. This is why this election is so important for the school board. We have to have a majority school board that is going to have the best interest of our students being in a, in a school of, schools of excellence. Not schools of, at the performance that they are now. Things are better, you know, we do get updates about the dropout rate and the graduation rate as well as attendance increasing. I mean, that's, I'm like, why are we, that should be a given, you know, that kids go to school and that they are graduating. So.
But they don't. I mean, we're seeing, especially since the pandemic, we've seen attendance rate, truancy rates, I should say, just skyrocket. And Manassas has seen a lot of problems with that.
Mm hmm. Yeah, I just, I think that the traveling, I haven't, like I said, my children are all over the country. I said this before we went on camera, they're all over the country and we have teachers in our families, you know, we have even students still in our families. And I'm seeing what's happening in other parts of the country and even in our state. And we just have to set the bar higher for our students. That's not a bad thing. They're gonna excel. What's, what's the problem? You know, like I said, students will, they'll get in line if they are told that's what they have to do. I do believe that. And parents want them to excel as well.
And you've got, you've got three school board candidates who are, who are running to, to, for, for open seats this fall on the school board. Talk to me about how these, these are all Republican backed candidates. Talk to me about he's, how these candidates want to go in and, and make some changes within the school division and maybe align with the three candidates that are running for the city council.
Yeah, there's actually four seats up and we have four candidates running.
On the school board?
Yeah, for school board. Yeah, there's four seats. And they are, they have a strong education background, their names, I'll read them, Mighty Whitesell, Dana Miles, Javonese Haley, and Ally Forkel. And they've all worked in the school system. Mighty is active in the leadership roles as a parent. I remember meeting her, oh my goodness, I bet it was eight years ago when, when she was involved with Round where my students, my kids went as students. And she was, you know, running things. And so she's now, her children have rose up to, you know, in the ranks of the schools. And she does speak quite frequently. So even though she wasn't a teacher, she has been very active in education. They're running, so their platform that they, you know, have out there on their palm cards, which, you know, rigorous academic expectations, stronger discipline and safer schools, and then recruitment and retention of high quality teachers. So that's what, that's a new leadership, you know, bringing in new leadership and fresh leadership. As educators, the majority of them, they, they have been in the trenches with the schools. And they're seeing what's working and what's not working. They are not in the Manassas City Public Schools, they're in different school districts except for Ms. Forkel, who was with the school system as of, I think, last year. She, she had.
Yeah, because you, you can't be on the school board and fund the city schools at the same time that, you know, you could, there could be some favoritism within that. So.
Yeah.
Most of these candidates, if they are a teacher and many of them work within the school division, they work either in Prince William County or Fairfax County or somewhere else.
Right. Yeah, that's correct. So, but they have, many of them have students in our school system. So. Yeah, I'm real excited about that. Very diverse team, bringing all types of perspectives, but they agree on the, you know, performance of schools, what I just told you about.
I'm curious, did, I mean, is there an open dialogue, I mean, between the city council and the school board? So for those who are not familiar, the city council gives money to the school board. The school board is not a taxing authority. It cannot raise its own taxes. It relies on money from the city and from the state and from the federal government to fund its operations. We spent a lot of time writing about the back and forth over this new dean elementary school. And, and at times it got contentious between the two, the two boards, the city council and the school board over this, this new school. What's the, what's the mood between the two, the two bodies right now? And, and if, if these candidates whom you've just mentioned, win these seats on the board, what do they need to do to change things?
Well, they have to, you know, bring the standards up, you know, and is also like, you know, we were talking about stronger discipline, making sure our schools are safe, of course. And just having majority rule, Sarah Breschaw and Robin Williams are on school board now and they're bringing forth some very good things. But if they can't get the majority, it's difficult. You know, this school board did go through a pandemic, you know, which was very difficult for the schools. But they have to understand, if you're looking at the competition that these children are going to have when they're in the real world, they gotta bring them up to where they need to be. You can only, and I'm seeing this actually in the business world, you know, when hiring people and how some, some of the, the young college students for like internships, you know, they definitely have had some, some, I want to say scarring, you know, from the pandemic where they were isolated and their social skills aren't as good as, as we thought they would have been. But, you know, they'll, they'll come around, things, things will come around because in business you can't, you have to perform. You know, that's just the way it is. The competition is too stiff, even though there's a lot of jobs out there. If you want a good paying career, you know, it's, it's stiff out there.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah. So council, you, you mentioned council and school board. So we're at, in my opinion, in my opinion, from what I'm seeing, it's, it's not, it's a little fractured. The school board, they have, you know, things are trying to get done and the council, as they say, holds the purse strings. But we're trying to, in my opinion, the focus needs to be on performance and education. Like that is the priority. There's so many other things that, that are getting put out in front of that. And I just don't think that's where we need to go.
It seems that generally as, as we go into budget season every year, and that's in the springtime of every year, we always hear, well, we need more money. We always need more money. And if you give us more money, it will equate to better academic outcomes. And, you know, at some point you have to wonder, is that a fact? Is that true?
Well, you have to make sure that our teachers are paid. So teacher retention is important. I do agree, we need to make sure our teachers are have, they have what they need in the classroom. There's some schools in the country that admin also has classroom duties. You know, like principals will teach a class, vice principals will teach a class. I'm not sure what we do there in our schools. I don't, I have a feeling that's not happening. But it keeps them in touch, the admin in touch with what's going on in the classroom. So they can better understand what our teachers need and our students. So that is policy changing, you know, honestly, that's where the school board comes in. They have to, they have to redo things. This is a very qualified slate coming up. So I have, I have no doubt they're gonna win. People are excited about them. They're well-oiled.
Let me ask you about your other slate of candidates who for the school, for the, for the city council, and you guys have branded this. You know, it's a new day in, in Manassas. And, and so you have a round table that is coming up. It is a campaign candidate round table. You have these, these three candidates who, well, four candidates who are all very familiar with, with anybody who's been in Manassas and especially who's been doing business in the city or pay attention to the, the elections or even county, city government. You have Robin Williams, who is currently on the school board and she's now seeking the council seat. You have Lynn Forkel Green, who has been on the council before and served and she's seeking reelection. Stephen Kent is a, he's a very familiar face. His wife ran, I believe it was from school board, Mel Kent ran for school board during the last cycle. And, and then you have, you have Byram Tang, as everyone knows her, Cheyenne Byram Tang for mayor. And, and she, you know, those who have been in Rotary know her, they know her from her business, which is Tang's Alterations. So, so you have a very, a very familiar slate here. And again, you guys are having a round table where people can come and talk to the candidates and, and I guess express their feelings about what's going on in the city. Talk to me about this event and how people can participate.
Yeah, this slate, Cheyenne Tang Byram, Stephen Kent, Robin Williams and Lynn Forkel Green, they all have service above self as their main background as to why they're running. They are truly running for the sake of the people of Manassas City. And that is the difference between them and the other slate. This is, they are all very, very experienced. They're natural leaders. They've been embedded in this community for a long time. They're gonna bring the real world experience to get this job done right away, you know, no, no on the job training needed for the, you know, even if Lynn's the only one that was elected and Robin, the other two are ready to go. They never would have stepped up for this if they weren't ready. So the round table is kind of something that we talked about from the beginning. I believe Cheyenne brought it up. Like you said, she's in Rotary. She is a mover and a shaker. When she wants to get things done, she'll get them done. She gets along with everyone and, but she also is very strong. She's, and she will get her point across immediately, you know, as to why, if there's like something that she doesn't agree with, she'll put her points out and respectfully ask for them to listen. So this is about listening as well. Listen to the, the community. We started as a business round table and then they all agreed, let's do a leadership round table. And really in our city, everyone's a leader. That's kind of how we looked at it. Anyone that is a resident is a leader in our city. They all have something they're contributing, whether if they're a parent or, you know, they're working at the hospital for volunteering or, you know, whatever. So I think we're expecting a really good turnout. We're kind of turning the tables and we want to hear what they have to say and then answer their questions as to, you know, what we can contribute. And they're problem solvers. They are not the type that will say, wow, 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 this is the solution, the solution to the problem. And what do you think?
This event is this Sunday, it's coming up on the, the, is it, is it, make sure I'm getting this correct, the 28th of January, January, July, where is my head? July. At the Forkel, at the, at the Jukebox Diner and, and that has sort of become a gathering place for the community, especially the governor has been here twice. During his tenure, Governor Yonkin has been here alongside Fox News, who have come to Manassas and broadcast live from there. So this, this is a community, a known community gathering space. And, and so when people come out, they, they can expect to have people listen to them and hear their concerns. Well, I'm hearing by, by talking to some of the candidates that, that crime is a concern, the rising rate of crime. You know, especially in the surrounding areas of Prince William County where we had a, you know, just double shooting earlier at Manassas Mall earlier this month, you know, and we had a guy, unfortunately, who was tragically killed in Montclair over the weekend. He was trying to prevent someone from stealing his car. And so we, we continue to see these headlines of crime is a concern and, and schools, I'm hearing is a, is a concern, no matter who is knocking doors in the city. That's what they're hearing.
Yeah, the crime, you know, when they report crime, you know, they usually put Manassas. A lot of people think that's the city as well. Our, we're not doing that. Our public safety is, I, I feel very proud of our public safety. I think our police and fire are doing a great job. There's some changes going on, you know, with fire. We'll probably talk about that later. Everybody wants a safe neighborhood, but we have to continue to keep it safe. You know, that's like the given. You can never, you can never turn your back on safety. When things are going well and the crime rate is, is improving, you have to always be aware that it could shift in very quickly. Our schools are probably the top priority as well, even though it's their city council. If the schools are not strong, it will affect everything else in the city. I mean, affect home values, businesses coming in, except, especially if there's a, a business coming in that has employees that want to live in the city and schools are an issue. Our private schools are very good in the city, but you know, we need to get the public schools to that level. You know, that's, that's the whole thing. And when it comes to money, you know, public schools are better funded than the private schools. So when you're looking at the numbers, it's like, what's the, what's the difference here? Well, it comes to accountability and also performance. You know, that's easy. Marstella, we bought that building, you know, that, that was owned by Manassas Baptist Church.
This was the old Marstella Middle School out there on Route 234 near the, near the, now it's no, no, it's not Novant anymore. It's UVA, Prince William Medical Center, near there.
Yes. And, you know, if you're aware, Pennington is right up the street from that, which is a county school that's run almost like a private school. They wear uniforms. I think it's a lottery system to get in there. And as far as I hear, you know, there's a waiting list, you know, it's, it's actually difficult. And I looked at that model and I know that the school board candidates, we haven't talked directly about this, actually council has. You know, we, we actually talked how we would be supportive if we wanted to do something like that in the city, just to get at least one school of excellence. The argument though is they all should be schools of excellence. Of course they should. But we lost a lot of students during the pandemic. They went to homeschooling, private school. So why can't we bring students back? You know, like what are they looking for? They're looking for a school of excellence. So that is something that the council might be talking about and not saying that they're gonna write a check to build a new school. That's not the thing. We have, we have buildings here, you know, what can we do to offer more of a setting where we can try to get those kids back? I, I think the numbers, Uriah, are like 12, about 1,200 kids were lost over the years. And that's a school, like seriously.
Yeah.
And yeah, so when you're looking at the performance of the schools and if you had a group of students that left because they weren't getting what they needed, how can we, their families pay taxes, you know, how can we get those students back if they want to come back? You know, families might not come back.
And then if you, if you have, I mean, so it always seems like competition spurs innovation. And so if you have, if you have a school of excellence, something that, that, that's something they can aspire to, right, to apply to be in, to be a part of. And, and, and it will certainly get, undoubtedly drive up performance rates at other schools who aspire to be better, as, as good, or if maybe not better than how the school, the quote unquote, school of excellence is, is performing. And, and so that's interesting you bring that up. I mean, do, do you anticipate having these discussions about creating the school at budget time? Is this something that we should be paying more attention to and following along?
So I did bring this up on council. You know, when Marstella was purchased, you know, it was me like, what are we gonna do with it? Oh, we're gonna have community conversations, you know, we're gonna have all that. Then there was this, oh, it's gonna be a community center. And I do not agree with that. I do not think that's the right place for a community center. There is no walkability. It's, there's no transportation that really is reliable to get there unless, you know, their students are, get their parents to take them there. We have a Boys and Girls Club. That, that, we already have a community center that needs help.
Yeah.
You know, it really does. I don't know if you've been in there and we had the 150th there. I was looking around like, what, what's going on here, you know? So instead of abandoning the Boys and Girls Club, which we have great people in there working, that's something I would like to bring up in the budget season. What is going on with the Boys and Girls Club if we're, you know, we'll hear from the community what they want to do with Marstella. But will the school board support? I can't even, you know, talk for our new slate if they would support what I'm saying. But when you're talking about the council and the mayor, we're chatting about that. Is that something we should do? We're gonna go to our school board slate and say, you're the experts advise us on this. You know, we, we're in the early parts of the campaign and we're out there really listening to people. We're walking the doors already. We got a full group of volunteers and all the candidates and their teams are already out to the doors. And it's about listening. And the round table, we'll bring this up, you know, what we just talked about.
Yeah, I think it's very interesting. And, and you bring up the, the 150th anniversary, which was celebrated last year in 2023 for the city of Manassas. And that is the last time that I have been to the, the, the Manassas Boys and Girls Club. I know it has a name, official name, but we'll just call it for the Manassas Boys and Girls Club. And, and I'm not here to beat up on him, but as, as I was in there, you guys had a thing inside the, the gym and it was the sort of the, the official program of the day. And, and I'm just looking around at the rafters and I'm seeing insulation and, you know, exposed walls and it's, and, and, you know, God bless the Boys and Girls Club for the work they do with the youth in the, in the community. We're not here to beat them up, but, but as you said, this place needs help.
They deserve better. And see, that's a walkable community center. You know, that, that services Georgetown South as well as City of Manassas students could have walked there, right down Prince William Street, Wellington. Bristow Station could ride their bikes there if they wanted to do that. You know, and that is complicated. There's a couple of them in the region, Boys and Girls Club. There are some nonprofits that help fund that. And I don't know what's going on. There is a board. I'm gonna try to go to a board meeting and start finding out more about this. But, you know, if we're starting about, talking about starting another community center, like, let's talk about the one we have now in a park. You know, that is set up for this and see what we can do about it. Yeah. So that is the difference, problem, solution, problem, solution. But anyway.
Well, let me, let me, let me switch gears now and, and talk about you, about John Snyder. You made, you made a very heartfelt post about Mr. Snyder's service to the city. He's a guy that looks like he was on the airport commission. He was a member of the electoral board and he recently passed away. So, so I, I, I never had the pleasure of, of working with him or knowing him. But, but given your words about him, that we certainly should be remembered for this, the service that he provided to the city. So if you would tell us about, who was John Snyder?
Yeah. So John, he and his family, so he was military, he was air force, he retired. His family, they lived all over the world. They ended up settling here less than 10 years ago because his family was here. And so when he, when he moved here, he showed up at some committee, a Republican committee meeting. He was a Republican. And that's, this is why this story is important. He showed up and, you know, like, oh, who's, who is that? You know, he, he was kind of a larger than life person when you met him, his presence. But he was extremely kind and giving. So he got involved right away. He did apply for the airport commission. He actually took my place. I was on the airport commission when I was elected. He, he replaced me, which was a huge plus for the airport commission. We had great people on the airport commission back then too. But he brought his experience as a pilot to that group. And, you know, look where we've come with the airport or on the cusp of bringing commercial air, hopefully sooner than later. After flying around, I'm like, I can't wait for us to have an airport. I know they won't go to Portugal, but they might go down to, you know, they might even go to California, who knows? So, so he was a hu, and he became the, the vice chair and he was just reelected vice chair not too long ago. So he also was on the electoral board. He was the chairman of the electoral board. And when I say, you know, he, as a Republican, he served the whole community well. And I have to say, you would never hear anything negative about John Snyder. He knew how to serve the community well. And I think that's what we all strive for, honestly, the people that are on our slates today is to be more like John Snyder. He was serving his community. That was his entire purpose to be there. He was the one that would present the election results. He also would be at the polls at the precincts to make sure everything was going all right. He was on my speed dial when it came to election day. If I ever had any questions, you know, John would get the answer. If there was anything that didn't look right, we would call John Snyder.
I remember his presentations to the city council and, and one of the most recent ones that we wrote about was, it could have been the, this past November's election where the cost of early voting has significantly driven up the cost for the city. And, and presumably other jurisdictions who all now have to do these 45 days of early voting ahead of election day in November. It's really driven up costs and, and he outlined that in terms of not only the numbers, but the, the ballots and where they go. And, and so he was, he was very thorough in his reporting to the city council. I do remember that about him.
You know, and so, you know, he was kind of leading that office, you know, representing them. That's, that's huge. He also was on the inter-service club council. When I was president, he was representing the, there's a group called the Men, the Men's Club. And then there's a group called the Women's Club. We used to always laugh about that. And so he would come, so he was very involved with all of the electoral organizations. There were like 26 of them in the inter-service club council. We all supported each other, Rotary, Kiwanis, you know, everyone. And so, um, in the, in the short time that he was here, he really made a big impact. And so we're gonna miss him greatly.
Well, I, Teresa, again, I, I've said this at the top, thank you so much for coming on with us and talking to us about the ongoing news and happenings in the city. We, I, I feel like I get a lot out of these conversations. I've got three or four different story ideas now to go on and, and, and look into and, and pick up the phone and call some other people and get some additional insight on, on a few of the different things that we touched on during this conversation. And I, and I hope that those, anyone listening to this. on, on a few of the different things that we touched on during this conversation. And I, and I hope that those, anyone listening to this or watching this video also provides it useful. And, you know, please let us know in the comments if you do. And if you have any questions for future discussions like this, I'm, I'm happy to, to ask Teresa or any other members of the city council who would agree to, to come on and, and talk with us. You know, as a side note, we are doing a series of, of, of question and answers. We, we call it the one question survey. And, and each week we've been sending out a, a survey question, whether it has to do with affordable housing, or I think we did budget and taxes last week. We have several different topics coming up. And, and all of the candidates, with the exception of one, that would be the current mayor, Michelle Davis Younger, has, has given great answers to all of our questions. And we certainly appreciate everyone on both sides coming in and, and, and being willing to participate and, and doing this. And so, so we hope in the future the mayor decides that, that she will participate and, and will answer our questions. It's fair to say she's never granted us an interview. She's never been responsive to this news organization at any point during her tenure, when she said she's taken office in 2021. But we, we always hope and, and, and pray that that changes because we want nothing for the best for the city's leaders because that equates good things for the city residents. And so that's what we all want. So with all that, thanks again for coming on.
Thank you, Uriah. Take care.